Good morning. It's 9am on the 8th of July 2021 and this is the Growth, Infrastructure and Waste Committee, number six of 2021. But also it's a very important occasion. It's also the very first council meeting in these very new council chambers. So it's great to have everyone here and it's great to see that we have a public gallery that can seat up to 70 people as well. There's a special desk there for media and other interested parties as well. So we'll go on first with the councillor attendance. And in attendance here we have councillor Island, councillor Madsen, councillor Halli, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekner, councillor Milligan and councillor Kunsleman. Here in attendance physically, I have councillor Johnic on video link, which, sorry, phone link, which I'll move a motion for in a moment. So councillor Nicola Johnic has requested attendance at the Growth, Infrastructure and Waste Committee of today via audio link. And that in accordance with section 254k of the Local Government Regulations 2012 and 8.6.2 of council's meeting procedures policy, councillor Nicola Johnic be permitted to participate in the meeting via audio link. I move that motion. Do I have a seconda?
I'll second that, yeah.
Thank you councillor Fekner. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour please raise your hand. And it's unanimous in the room. Councillor Johnic is joining in via audio link. Thank you very much. We do not have any apologies. Now normally for a subcommittee meeting, we wouldn't have an acknowledgement to a country opening prayer, but this week is a very special week. It's NADOC week. So with that, your indulgence, I'd like to move that I do an acknowledgement of country. And councillor Johnic? Yea or nay?
Affirmative.
Thank you. To Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples, this year's NADOC theme of Heal Country is important, as the land provides the community with so many songline stories that contribute to the health and wellbeing of its peoples and the country that they belong to. Healing country is also about hearing those pleas to provide greater management, involvement, and empowerment by Indigenous peoples over country. Healing country means embracing First Nations cultural knowledge and understanding of country as part of Australia's national heritage. The objective of the Ipswich Heritage Programme is to identify places of cultural heritage significance within Ipswich and to encourage their conservation for the present community and future generations. Ipswich City Council continues to work under the guidance of the Cultural Heritage Act to ensure that the significant sites are not damaged and to raise awareness to our city's rich cultural heritage. Thank you. I'll now move on to declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. Yes, thank you councillor Madsen.
In accordance with 958 of the Local Government Act 2009, reconfiguring lot 11 and 27 Nicola Street Ipswich, the nature of my declarable conflict of interest is I'm on the executive of the Ipswich Trace Limited Committee, which is pretty close to all the activity in that item today. As a result of my conflict of interest, I'll leave the room while the matter is discussed.
Thank you councillor Madsen. Thank you very much for proactively declaring your conflict of interest. Are there any other declarations of interest? No? Then we'll move on. The first item of business, the confirmation of minutes of the Growth, Infrastructure and Waste Committee, 5 of 221, on the 10th of June.
I have a reminder of amendments.
Yes, councillor Kunsleman?
On page 22, I wanted to let the place start by.
Correct. Sorry, what do you want? I'll have you say that again.
Yeah, I might remember. On page 22, 263, I mentioned.
I was boding on the matter and I was not here.
You want a leave of absence?
I wasn't leave of absence.
Thank you very much. So with that amendment in place, I'm looking at the Secretariat. We remove councillor Kunsleman's name from page 22, which is on a development interview. I'll move the minutes. May I have a seconda? Thank you councillor Milligan. Any discussion on the minutes? There being no further discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Affirmative, thank you. And hopefully we'll get some information back from council officers by then. Thank you. So it's carried. We move on to item number three. Item three is procurement contract for card fuel and associated services. I recommend that all three recommendations, A, B and C, be moved together. And that is that council A resolve in a satisfied under section 235F of the Local Government Regulations to set the exception under that section of the regulation applies. And that Ampole Australia Petroleum Proprietary Limited is a supplier reasonably available to council provide the fuel card supply agreement for fleet vehicles. And B that council enter a supply agreement with Ampole Australia Proprietary Limited for provision of the fuel card style and supply for a three year, for a period of three years plus one plus two year extension for the estimated sum of $11 million, excluding GST of the contract period. And C that the CEO be authorized to negotiate and finalize those terms. I'll move that. Do I have a seconda for those three? Thank you councillor Kunsleman. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions? No? I guess then as part of discussion, I note that obviously council has 370 fuel cards. And I can see that what we're doing here is basically piggybacking off supply arrangements that the Queensland government have, but also that it looks like that the Queensland government, the New South Wales government and the Victorian governments all work together to achieve aggregate savings, which I think is a smart purchasing decisions, decision. And obviously gives us substantial savings on that.
One more clarification, ma'am. I think that we have an MOU with the New South Wales State Government, so it's not necessarily the Queensland government's negotiated contract. Rather, we're just piggybacking on that.
Thank you. Right, thank you very much councillor Fekner. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Around the room, it's unanimous. Councillor Johnic, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item four, which is the Infrastructure Environment Division Capital Portfolio Financial Performance Report for May 2021. And that recommendation is that the monthly financial performance report on the infrastructure environment department's capital portfolio budget for 2021 be received in the contents noted. May I ask the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please? May you please state your name and your position?
Good morning. Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
Thank you, Mr Bowles. This looks like a bit of housekeeping. How would you explain this and why is it happening now?
That's a good way to describe it. Housekeeping, titling exercise essentially. So there has been a lot of work in this locality, the new administration building, Tom and Place, works occurring in the East Building and the library. This titling exercise rearranges boundaries in a way to allow us as a council to manage those spaces properly as administrator. And basically tidies up the boundaries that currently exist.
Okay.
Fairly administrative essentially.
Okay. Is there any cost to council?
There'll be costs of drafting application fee. So the plans and things like that. I mean, that's the titles office, very minor costs, but no. Otherwise, it's purely making hypothetical spaces essentially rather than actual works.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr Bowles? Thank you very much, Mr Bowles.
Thank you.
I move that council resolve to approve development application number. I move that council resolve to approve development application number 5201/2021/RAL in part subject to conditions and attachments. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Doyle. I'll open it up for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room, noting that councillor Madison is not in the room. Councillor Johnick, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Okay. It's passed by all those who can vote and carried. I'll just wait for councillor Madison to come back to the room. Thank you. I note that councillor Madison is back in the room. For item six, which is the re-establishment of Heritage and Monuments Advisory Committee, this report has a number of recommendations here, and based on the workshops that have happened in the past, I'm actually going to change the recommendations for this council going forward. There's been much discussion as to the membership. There's a lot of interest, I think, so I actually recommend that we move this item to a workshop for councils to discuss the membership, but also the chairing and the governance arrangements for this particular advisory committee. Do I have a second for that? I think councillor Tully is a second for that. I'll open it up for any discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Councillor Johnick, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We'll now move on to item seven, which is the Planning and Environment Court Action Status Report. May I have the relevant council officer to the lectern, please?
Good morning. Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
Thank you very much, Mr Bowles. Do you mind giving us, without breaking any legal in confidence, but obviously the Land Tract BMI action, could you give us an update on that?
Yep. So there's still five weeks to go, essentially, a couple of days in there that aren't much action, but next week is a conversation with Land Tract, landfill design operations and town planning experts, so that will be the focus of next week. A week after, the focus will be on Austin BMI and their experts, and then essentially common need material discussions on the off-free landfills. Then last week will be, in August, will be closing statements for off-free. So there's still a fair way to go. And as with the rest of the trial, all the hearing, members of the public are welcome to attend, to sit on and observe the proceedings.
Thank you, Mr Bowles. And the application with Newgro, how is that going?
So we've issued a show cause notice to Newgro to, to, on the minutes about the activities that are occurring on the site, and on the other side, the AS of action there to rectify issues related to store model interchange, which essentially is a more powerful tool than the previous approach we've taken, and essentially succeeds. So there are essentially two actions. Caring, council is taking its path through the show cause notice, and the AS is carrying out the API.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr Bowles? Yes, councillor Tully?
Yeah, I have one in relation to, on page 244, that's the appeal by Spring Lake Holdings Proprietary Limited at One Springfield Lakes Boulevard. Just wanted to clarify how or under what circumstances that fell into a deemed refusal?
There is a matter of contention with this application that we've been seeking to resolve through conversations with the applicant relating to the allocation of EPs, which are equivalent persons for the determination of the impact of the use on the sewer network. And there was a disagreement about the number of EPs that should be utilized on the site or allocated to the site in a way, and that disagreement is a subject to the appeal. The reason we were unable to come to an agreement is we believe there are not enough EPs on the site, and the applicant believes that they're not required to provide them. So we weren't able to achieve an extension or an agreement with the applicant to continue that conversation during the assessment, so the applicant has sought to have that mediated essentially or resolved through the appeal process rather than through conversations with ourselves as council.
Just to clarify, that doesn't fully answer what I'm after, is, you know, my view is we should be trying to avoid deemed refusals, certainly deemed approvals, obviously, but could we have taken some action, for example, refusing the application if the applicant hadn't provided the relevant information by the close-off date?
That's right. That would have been an option available to us to refuse the application, and essentially we've wound up in the same place, in that we're having an appeal, or the matter's gone to the court because of that. I do agree that deemed refusals are something that we should be seeking to avoid in all circumstances, but at the same time, we aren't always able to convince applicants to provide us with the time to assess the application. And there are occasions where there are frustrations from the applicant, and they don't believe that they are able to reach a point where they agree with us. So for a lot of cases where we do receive a deemed refusal, it's because it's driven by the applicant to push it to a state where it's mediated through the court.
That's fine. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr Bowles? Thank you very much, Mr Bowles. I move that the report be received and the contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. How do you vote, councillor Johnick?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. Unanimous and passed and carried. On to item eight, which is the exercise of delegation report. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this report? No. In that case, I move that the report be received and the contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion on the matter? There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. How do you vote, councillor Johnick?
Unanimous and carried. We move on to item nine, which is the Ipswich Works and Services Customer Satisfaction Service, which is a report concerning the results of the Ipswich Works and Services Customer Satisfaction Service up to the end of May 2021. It's by any customer satisfaction performance against targets, set in the operational plan and recently adopted with resource management. I have the honourable council officer to talk to them.
Mr Madigan, acting general manager of infrastructure and environment.
Thank you, Mr Madigan. Thank you for this report. May I ask, the 300 customers that were contacted by telephone, how were they selected?
They are just through a random selection process on the waste team, so we have all that data. And the collection notice enables us to contact them to assess our customer service level, so it is very much a random survey.
So of ratepayers and...
That's correct. Yeah, of ratepayers who actually are customers of ours, so waste customers, which is the vast majority of residents.
Yep. Do you know the mix of residents versus commercial and industrial?
I think this particular survey is purely residential, in my understanding.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of Mr Madigan? No. Thank you very much, Mr Madigan. I move that the report be received and contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Ireland. Is there any discussion on this matter? There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Councillor Johnick, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Okay. It's unanimous and carried.
We'll now move back to item two, and I'm looking at Mr White to see if he has the information that's requested. And we're at item two, which is the procurement of Littlewood Road North, closely final popping. I'm just checking.
Will we have to go back into closed session to have the discussion for some of the questions that were raised by councillor Johnick?
To discuss some of the de-cust of the offering, okay, the press is probably this.
So we're coming back to item number two to get some information, so we're actually going to come back into closed session, because we're going to discuss some of the commercial confidence responses in the tender. So I propose that councillor John, why are you sitting at your second match?
My question. Of my question?
I tell you that councillor Ireland has seconded that motion, so we'll now move into, put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room that we were going to close session. Councillor Johnick, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Harrison, let me know when we are. Thank you. We've moved back into open session for item number two of the GIW. There were discussions about, I guess, the timing, so I think that's not confident, you know, once we've got down to it. One of the suppliers always wants to know why the length of time was put there, and obviously we've come back saying that there was Christmas and a consideration for wet weather and so on. So thank you very much for clarifying.
And all confirmed through our standard confirmation and all recorded.
Yep. Mr White, I know that when this came to us before, we did look at a budget for around, was it six or seven million?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half million dollars. Could you explain how these savings were achieved?
So we took this to open competitive market, and we do see a range of offers in response. Perhaps the budget was attuned to a general construction firm. By taking it to a competitive offer, we were able to garner competitive offers from people in that industry, rather than the use of offset arrangements, and specialists have provided a much more in-tune price for us, which is, I believe, three to four million dollars below the budgeted cost.
Right. And DECC Environmental, have they done work with this city council in the past?
I do not believe they have. They're not a familiar supplier to me.
Right.
So we'll accept them up, and they're based out of Logan.
Okay. So going to open market meant we got better offers.
In this case, yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a point of order, Chair.
Yes.
The right time to move back to open session.
I'll just double check. My apologies. So, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. So obviously, in the process, I did move that we go back to open session, and councillor Ireland seconded it, and I did not ask for a vote. My apologies. I will do that now. Now call it into a vote. Those in favour, that we were in open session. I'll look around the table. It's unanimous. Councillor Johnick, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that, and I apologise to the council for missing that. Any other questions of Mr White? No, thank you very much, Mr White. I'll just reconfirm that the three recommendations I had moved previously and councillor Doyle had seconded, I confirm that that is still the case, councillor Doyle?
Confirmed, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I'll leave this up for any discussion amongst councillors? No, no other discussion. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. In the room, it's unanimous. How do you vote, councillor Johnick?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. It's unanimous and carried.
That is the last item on our agenda. The notice is a motion, no notice arising, or procedural motions are formalised, so committee is now closed at nine forty-five. And good. So we'll join again in ten minutes at nine fifty-five the next week. Thank you.